I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham?
President.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilman Avery?
Here.
Councilman Back?
Here.
Councilman Wilson?
Here.
Councilwoman Manatra?
Here.
And Councilman Robinson?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we are eternally grateful that you have blessed us with another day of life, health, and strength. God, we thank you for the opportunity to do your will as we serve in the positions that you have blessed us with. We ask your continual blessings upon our mayor and his cabinet, Lord God, upon our council, Lord God, and all our city workers in whatever place they serve. We thank you for what you have already done. We thank you for what you're doing right now, and we thank you for what you are about to do in this city. We thank you, Father, that life and death is in the power of the tongue. So we continue to speak life to our city, Lord God. We continue to thank you, Lord God, that you know the way that we take, and your word declares that the steps of a good man are ordered by the Lord. So we thank you that you are leading us and you are guiding us to bigger and greater.
Yes.
And we thank you for the power of agreement. It's become an agreement that your will will prevail. And Father God, anything that comes against it, we commit it to the pit of hell now, never to be released anymore. We give you praise that we have your faith, to call those things that be not as though they were. We ask this prayer in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, point of order. Would you ask the Sergeant-at-Arms to close the chamber doors, please? I'm hearing some chatter out there.
I sure will. If we could get the doors closed in the back of the chambers, please. Thank you very much. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Works Committee work session and city council meeting held on July 18th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of July 14th through July 20th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven is reserved for proclamations and commendations. Mayor Ford, do you have some today?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Today, we have a mayor's commendation. As a result of the retirement of Ms. Deborah Gaither as the Gadsden EMA Director, Gadsden Fire Chief Will Reed agreed to step in and serve as acting EMA Director while the City of Gadsden was conducting a search and permanent director with approval of the city council on Edgewall County Commission. We wanted to thank Chief Reed for stepping in and filling in. Is he here? Chief? Chief, thank you. We want you to know that doesn't go unnoticed, and when we hired Derek, he said, "Thank goodness." He don't want to say anything, he's done. And we do want to thank our fire and police and public works for another storm that they handled last Friday, and we'll save those comments for later. Is the Huntley family, Huntley Gilbert, come on up, please. During the month of July, the Huntley Gilbert Bennett family will be hosting their very first reunion right here in Gadsden. This family is made up of the descendants of Joe Huntley, Lorena Gilbert, Levann Gilbert, and George Bennett. The elders of the family were originally from Coosa County, Alabama, and later settled in Gadsden where majority of the family was raised and still resides. The family decided to host a reunion in Gadsden because most of the family who lives in Gadsden did not know each other. So the family thought it would be best to host a reunion where everyone could come together and learn more about each other. The Huntley Gilbert Bennett family reunion will be held July 28th, 29th at the Kiwanis Pavilion located at Nacolula Falls. The family is expected to have approximately 150 people here for the reunion, and many will come from all corners of the state and nation. I would like to commend the Huntley Gilbert Bennett family for seeing opportunity to get their family together in Gadsden. Strong family connections are vital for the striving community. We wish the family well in gathering and hope they will continue to choose Gadsden for decades to come. This was also brought to my attention by Ms. Elaine Spearman, and she asked if we would recognize them. Then she came to find out she's related to them. So we're going to call it the Huntley Gilbert Bennett Ford Family Reunion. But thank you, and it's an honor to give this to you, sir.
Thank you.
So I want to say, I was going to present the resolution Saturday to the reunion. We'll have someone from the mayor's office due to me being out of town this weekend, but I wanted to let you know, sir. Okay. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. All right. Item agenda eight is unfinished business. We have none today. Item nine is a resolution authorizing special use permit for AT&amp;T. This is for installation of their equipment and modification of the existing wireless telecommunication facility located at 500 Clayton Boulevard. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I know last week there was a little bit, and I think, David, you could, I don't know if I remember the pertinent questions, but maybe if you could...
Jeff was here last week.
Yes, sir.
I didn't know if there was any questions. I know he said that there was some questions about small cell legislation from Councilman Wilson. So the city in 2015 adopted its own small cell ordinance that preceded the state in passing their legislation. So in 2020, the state did pass the small cell legislation, but the way it was written is if the city had already, if the city already had adopted regulations for small cells, then basically it was exempt from the state's legislation that it proposed. The one that the city approved is a lot better than the one that the state had adopted. It gives the city a lot more leeway in placing these facilities and getting the fees that the federal regulations require. So we're in a good spot as far as our regulations here in the city as far as small cells.
And this may be a little too broad of a question, but with this new broadband infrastructure funding that the state's received, and I know we've had some preliminary discussions already about that, you know, on a state level about some overall assessments of what our current broadband situation is, to just bring it down to brass tacks, like, my cell service is not very strong downtown and in several parts of downtown, will broadband and small cell be able to overlap to improve not only the access to broadband internet throughout the city, but will that also improve or build upon our cellular network as well? Can they utilize those funds?
So they can. Most of that broadband funds has been used for rural areas.
Right.
And that's where just about everything that we've seen with broadband has been in the rural areas. Now, the cellular carriers haven't got any of that funds at this point.
Right.
So the five cell and the small cell technology, the 5G and small cell technology is rolling out a lot slower than you're seeing areas where they're putting in fiber. I know in Lawrence, Morgan, in that area, Joe Wheeler, EMC, and most of that rural broadband is being done by your electrical providers instead of the carriers for like wireless service, if that makes sense.
But eventually, the two, one could potentially have a positive impact on the other.
Correct, yes.
All right. Great. Thank you.
And just for clarity and transparency, David Andrews is our consultant. David, I forget the name of your company.
Center for Municipal Solutions.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Our EMS.
We rely on David to bring us information and to keep us in good condition with our towers and things like that. That's really a specialty thing. He works with our city attorney, Lee Roberts, oftentimes on legislation. So thank you for coming over today.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, sir.
All right. So we've had the discussion. Any more? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you. Item 10 is a resolution authorizing direct deposit from MetLife. This is to authorize dividend payments by direct deposit into the city's bank accounts. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 comes as an ordinance under first reading. This is authorizing conveyance of property located at 1601 Cansler Avenue. Mayor Omar Gomez Martinez has offered to pay $37,500 for the property. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item 12 is new business. We have a few items today.
Yes, Mr. President, unfortunately for anybody who is looking to get out of here early for lunch, we're going to be here for a second. I got a few. The first one I'll start with is an item routed to us from the Finance Department, and I guess actually, let me make sure that I'm going to do this in the right order. This is, okay, yeah, I wanted to make sure I wasn't jumping ahead to the JAG grant, but this is amending the fiscal year budget to transfer some funds into several miscellaneous accounts for the Building Department because of the expedited nature of their work over the year. I just saw Brian Harson in the hallway. He said they had started over 200 nuisance cases so far this year, just between January and June, and he said to put that in perspective, they normally do 200 all year. And so just through June, they've already done 200. So what this would do would transfer $15,000 of funds that are left over in the budget from our part-time employees' funds into several different categories, administrative categories for the Building Department. One would be, $2,500 would be transferred from part-time employee fund into the professional fees fund. You would also transfer $5,900 into the legal service fees fund. There'd be $600 transferred into the postage account, $1,500 into the advertising account, $1,500 into the recording account, and $3,000 into the miscellaneous account. And again, that would all be transferred from the part-time employees' fund in the amount of $15,000, given that the budget is dry essentially in the Building Department right now. I'd like to ask that we suspend the rules and consider this transfer of funds under new business.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have a unanimous vote for consideration today.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next, I have a resolution that was routed to us from the Police Department authorizing the application and acceptance for a JAG grant. This is the, what is referred to as the JAG grant, actually the Justice Assistance Grant is the official title of it. For the fiscal year 2023, we are soliciting an application in the amount of $45,054 total. That will be for a camera system with a 4G camera and thermal capabilities, a camera system with one Wi-Fi camera with pole adapter, and 28 infrared laser and white light illumination systems, and then the shipping and handling fees associated with that. And to clarify that this is a joint grant between the Gadsden Police Department and the Edgewall County Sheriff's Department. They will share in the proceeds from this and the purchase of this equipment. So again, in the nature of the timeline for this grant application to be submitted, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one, Mr. President, is being routed to us from the Legal Department. This is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Civic Plus for an app program, a CRM program called See Click Fix 311. Just to clarify, the total amount of this is $18,150.17. And what this is, and I'm super excited about this personally, this is a mobile app that citizens will be able to download and use to report issues in the community. So if you have a pothole on your street, or if you see a downed tree in the road, or if there's debris or garbage somewhere, you'll be able to utilize this app to pull it out, take a picture of it, submit it. It instantly goes to the appropriate department within the city. Not only will the citizen who reports the issue get regular updates, but this will help with the city to be able to route internally who's responsible for what, and it'll greatly improve our ability to communicate with citizens and get issues resolved quicker. So again, this is a fantastic improvement, I think, to our overall communication strategy. So with that in mind, I would ask that we suspend the rules today and consider this under new business as well.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
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 Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And just to put an exclamation point on that, there's going to be about a two-month implementation process before this will launch, so be looking for that probably in the fourth quarter of this year. You'll get some information on the city's website about how to download that app. Last one for me, Mayor. This is an ordinance routed to us, again, from the Legal Department amending the City Code Article 4 concerning dogs and cats. This updates the ordinance to reflect the following language under Section 10-108, managed care of dogs and cats. It shall be unlawful to own or maintain within the city limits a dog or cat appearing to be of at least six months of age that is not sexually sterilized, i.e. spayed or neutered. Persons convicted of violating this ordinance shall be subject to a fine of $100 for the first offense, $250 for the second offense, and $500 for the third offense. As everyone knows, we have a major stray animal population issue that we've been consistently working to resolve, and this is just another component in those efforts for those. We had a brief discussion during the pre-council meeting about creating a business license exception for animal breeders who, for example, raise dogs for the police force and things like that. So again, given the seriousness of the issue in the community, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
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 Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move to adopt, please. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson.
Mr. President.
Councilman Avery.
I have to start him with the resolution first, requested by the Legal Department, 2023-615. It's a resolution authorizing purchase of property located at 200 Broad Street. Before I go into the resolution, I might could make a segue in this manner. Gadsden First City Hall was built at a time of rapid growth. In 1904, many improvements came to the City of Gadsden. One of the major problems with the city government was addressed in April 1904. By this, a seat for city government had become a necessity. The answer materialized in the building of the first Gadsden City Hall on North Fifth Street. Decision to build this structure was made during the administration of Mayor Robert Campbell. With all of them were JP Armstrong, M.W. Moore, Lawrence Smith, C.L. Geis, and J.D. Dunlap. Moving on, by the late 1950s, Gadsden City Hall was beginning to show its age. Plans were underway to build a new civic center. By 1958, this structure was built on the property overlooking the Coosa near the Memorial Bridge and the structure of Emma Santum. Plans were announced November 2nd, 1958. The new civic center was to be constructed during the next 18 months. Two new fire stations also were to be constructed, one in downtown Gadsden and one in West Gadsden. The new city hall and two new fire stations were financed by a bond issued of 2.7 million. The new complex was built between South First, the Coosa River, and Broad Street. Today, I have a resolution before me, whereas the mayor has negotiated the purchase of property located at 200 Broad Street Gadsden, Alabama, 35901, the purchase of 2.8. And whereas the mayor has also negotiated agreement with Regions Bank wherein Regions will lease back approximately 4,300 square feet of the purchased property at a rate of $12 per rentable square footage annually for years 1 through 5, and $14 per rentable square footage annually for years 6 through 10. Today, I'll ask for suspension of rules to consider this as under business today.
Mayor Ford, any discussion? Mayor Ford?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Avery did a good job of explaining the history of our city halls. I would like to just note that in 1960, this building was bonded for 2.7 million, and if you do the scale of economics on it, of inflation, it would be worth $27 million today, the 2.7 million in 1960. So for us to be able to purchase Regions Bank for 2.8 million, I'd say that's a pretty good deal. We want to thank Regions Bank for their cooperative effort with the City of Gadsden of being a corporate partner with us. They're doing it based on the fact of their name and working with the City of Gadsden. We want to thank Mr. Paul Stivender and their real estate division and their president for what they've done. Mr. Jim Stivender and Ellis Stivender will be proud to know that their son has had a major impact on the future growth of the City of Gadsden. Not only is it that we are relocating city hall, but also we have already entered into a memorandum of understanding with a developer here for the current city hall that is one of the premier developers in southeast America, and we've already met with them. And I want to thank Tina King with the mayor's office for helping orchestrate this deal with Regions, and I want to thank John Moore for orchestrating the deal with the current city hall. So more is to come on this area. We cannot announce what is happening right now, but we're doing economic impact study and doing our due diligence on what needs to be done. But Gadsden will not be the same once this is completed, so I want to thank the council.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Appreciate all the help that's been going on behind the scenes here for months. Thank you. I think I failed to get a second on that, Ms. Nelson, so I need to get a second for Councilman Avery's motion.
I didn't hear one.
Yeah. Councilwoman Latham, all right. Now, clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move the passage. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, I have one last one. It's Legal Department ordinance amending fiscal year 2023 budget for the amount of 2.8 from the general fund, unassigned fund balance into account 001-9500-419.70, capital all play buildings. This fund will be used for the purchase of the property located at 200 Broad Street. I ask for suspension of rules to consider this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Thank you, Mayor Ford. Item 13 is department reports, committees, and boards. We have any department reports today? All right. If not, we have a special guest that we've invited today. This is our probate judge, Judge Scott Hassel. About four years ago, I went to a meeting, National League of Cities meeting in Los Angeles, and I saw a program called Kahoots, which was Community Action Health. I can't remember the other acronyms. Came back, talked with Judge Hassel. He was already probably two years ahead of me. He was working on a program that he's going to tell us about, that the City of Gadsden in the last term committed $250,000, which was 50% of the $500,000 budget, and it's basically a community mental health program that Judge Hassel heads up for. So Judge, thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to be here today to kind of bring us up to speed and let the community know what your office is doing in conjunction with our sheriff and police department and to address the mental health issues.
Well, thank you. It's an honor for me to be here today. I didn't realize it was going to be a historic meeting. I think this will be an annals of history in U-City Hall. That's incredible.
That is.
I get out of my car, and they're pressure washing the sidewalk. Everywhere I go, there's something happening in Gadsden. So, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mr. Mayor, I rise today as Edgewall County's 15th Judge of Probate to say thank you and to update you on a partnership that I think that is making an impact in our community. We realized, or I realized early on in my term, that the mental health problem that has continuously been on the rise in our community and across the nation, we were not going to find a solution from state government. No disrespect to them, but if we were going to solve our problems, it had to be done locally. I came before this honorable body over a year ago, pardon me, and shared a vision, and I came ready to, you know, I was ready to fight. I was going to say, let me explain to you why I think this will work. Zero opposition. Same thing with the county commission. And I started seeing this trend where county and the county and the city and municipalities were working together, and I think that's just a good thing for Edgewall County. So if you'll indulge me for a few moments, I'll update you about MCAT, which is an abbreviation for the Mobile Crisis Assistance Team. We took a three-pronged approach to dealing with our mentally ill in our community. The first one is education. There's a lot of misnomers about what mental illness is and what it is not. And so we've attempted to educate individuals that while it does have a stigma, mental illness is a disease of the brain, not unlike heart disease is a disease of the heart, and diabetes is a disease of the pancreas. And while many of those conditions, including mental illness, is not curable, it's treatable, and we can manage the symptoms if we stay on top of it. So we're working, and I think we've done a good job of educating folks, and that's a daily thing. The other part of that is prevention. So many times, the model in Alabama has been, let's respond when there's an emergency, when there's a crisis. And I think that knee-jerk reaction does a disservice to our community, to our government, and also to the persons that suffer. So we're trying to educate and encourage our first responders and members of the community at the first sign, or when you see someone who is mentally ill, to reach out to us. That doesn't mean if you file a petition, we're going to put everyone in the hospital and send them to a state facility. We want to help folks early on. Many of these symptoms, the earlier we catch it, the better treatment results we're going to have. And then, of course, finally, the intervention piece. We appointed a community mental health officer that is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. In so many situations, our first responders were forced into a situation where they would receive a call perhaps in the middle of the night. Someone is mentally ill, having a psychotic episode in the middle of Broad Street. That officer had very few options except to, you know, ignore it, go away, or put them in jail. And I think we would all agree that jail is not the place for the mentally ill. Now, that officer, that firefighter, that EMS provider can call our community mental health officer 24/7, can go on the scene, and exercising his authority granted under Title 22 of the code, can have them transported even against their will to a local emergency department. Since we have done that, our CSO has conducted in just in last year, 102 field assessments, 203 hours of field assessment. 96 people after hours that otherwise would have gone to jail went to the hospital instead. In 2022, 166 petitions for involuntary commitment were filed in Edgewall County. Through June of this year, there were 95. That shows a 14% increase over 2022. Now, I would say to you, there's two reasons for that. One is that I don't know that, well, the numbers can be skewed in one way in that I think we're identifying folks better than we were in previous. And I'll be honest with you, and I know this is a discussion the council and the city and the mayor has had on numerous occasions, we're seeing a large number of individuals that are not from this area that have been brought here, and that's taxing our system. I mean, it is what it is. I had a meeting with the hospital administrators in the last couple of weeks, and we're trying to work towards solutions to... to work towards solutions to maybe remedy this problem. And I'll be quite honest, I don't know how we remedy that, but I understand the city's taken some steps, and I commend you on that. Currently, our community mental health officer is supervising 36 individuals. And the way that works is, so if a person is taken to the hospital and we get them to baseline, and baseline is a medical term, which means that their symptoms are as good as they're going to get. In so many instances, we would get them to baseline. And let me take just a moment to thank Gadsden, Region, and Riverview. They treat countless individuals every year at no cost. They don't get any reimbursement just because they're good partners for our community. So I have to commend them. But individuals would get at baseline, they would be discharged under an outpatient order. In so many situations, they would just not take their meds. There's a phenomenon in mental illness called anosognosia, which means I'm sick, but I don't know it. So if we get them at baseline, they stop taking their medications, and the cycle repeats, each time a little bit worse. Now, when they're on an outpatient order, every single week, they have to report into the community mental health officer. If they're not taking their meds, that goes on for a week, they're going to find the deputy sheriffs knocking on their doors, bringing them before the probate court for them to explain why they're not taking their meds. There was an argument or concern amongst some of our recipients that they couldn't get transportation to CED Mental Health Center. Didn't accept that anymore. Instead, we have a therapist that is in our office at 800 Forest Avenue. There's a therapist in the courthouse. So if you're mentally ill, you're under an outpatient order, you're going to come to the courthouse to see your therapist, you're going to see your community mental health officer, and you can receive your medication there. If you don't, we're going to come see you. What's next? We want to continue to identify folks early on to make sure that we're doing what we need to do to make the process or the situation better. We're encouraging all persons and all citizens, if you see someone that is suffering from mental illness, any person, any citizen 19 years of age or older can file a petition. Doesn't mean we're going to bust in in somebody's house, but we're going to reach out to them and see if they truly need help. And then the last thing we want to do is leverage technology. Technology's been a phenomenal thing with social media, and there's a lot of apps that we can get our recipients to utilize that helps them engage services 24/7 and also helps us engage them more and to monitor if they're decompensating. I would say this, Mr. President, in closing. I've been around city and county government for going on 30 years, and I've never seen more excitement and more enthusiasm than I do right now, just sitting here listening to the businesses being conducted in this city. I'm excited. We can watch on the television, reading the news every day of what's wrong with our governments in America. I am honored and proud of you guys because I think I'm looking at what is right with our community and what's right with our government. With that, Mr. President, I will entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you so much for those kind words, and thank you for the effort. I mean, I can tell by the enthusiasm, and you're making a difference, and so was the officer, so that is fantastic news. I'm sure there's people in the room that have firsthand experience.
And if I may, Ricky Johnson, he's our community mental health officer?
Sure, please. Yeah. Thank you, Ricky.
He's not very pretty, but he's very talented.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mayor Ford.
I'd like to say something to Judge Hassel. So when I was in the legislature, mental health was a big issue with the state when they shut down the mental health hospitals during the Bentley area. But I want to say thank you to you for picking up the baton. Mental health is a major issue to everybody, but especially us here in Gadsden and Etowah County. And for those cities and counties that did not take it up and take it upon themselves and rely on some agency or someone in our probate judge's office, they were getting left behind. And it's almost a domino effect. It almost gets too bad where you can't catch up. So thank you for picking that up and getting us back going again, and I appreciate all the efforts of you too, Ricky. So thank you both.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you for everything you're doing. Mental health is such an important issue in our community. But on a lighter note, are elected officials eligible for that petition where I can get them committed?
Absolutely.
I got a few candidates I'd like to talk to you all about.
You can make a motion in a second. We can come in for it today. Yes, sir. I think Bryce has put in a new Starbucks, so it's a nice place this time of year.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Judge Hassel, thanks for being here today. In conjunction with Judge Hassel's report, we've asked Ruth Moffett, oh, you looked at me kind of funny. It's on my sheet, Ruth. I'm sorry. Update on efforts at municipal court in conjunction with what the MCAT program is doing. Ms. Moffett works in many different areas in our city, but this is one of her passions also is, you know, we've talked about compassion, of treating people with compassion and kindness that needed as opposed to just throwing them in jail. So thank you so much.
All right. So absolutely. So the Bible says, be ye also ready. Well, good morning to everyone. I guess the only update that we would have is that we have submitted that ESG grant. And a huge thanks to Judge Hassel and to Ricky and all the phenomenal work that they do. We definitely want to partner with them once we receive notification that we've received that grant. As well, we are in the process of filling out that continuum of care grant. We refer to that as COC, and that is a homelessness grant. But I think we can all agree that a large percentage of our homelessness is, it does have that mental health component to it, as well as that we are actually working to also try to bring some solutions around individuals that we feel like are coming from other communities. So we've identified a nonprofit who has agreed to do some case management for us, do an intake process. And what that would look like is if an individual has been identified as homeless, then they can go and talk with that individual, try to figure out kind of what's going on, where did they come from, and what is their situation, you know? Like we talked about earlier, some of those pathways, is it, you know, is it mental illness? Is it drug addiction? Which mental illness and drug addiction often runs hand in hand. Is it economic instability? Is it an individual? I met a gentleman who was a veteran who made as much money as I do, but he was injured while he served. And so he did not have the mental capacity to do something, to make decision-making. And so he really needed the services of priority veteran to help him in that process. So it's really identifying, you know, what has caused them to get here, you know, in this particular place. So we've identified a nonprofit who has said, yes, we will do that. They have submitted a scope of work. So we're working through some of those things. And I am extremely confident that we are so close, like we are right there at the edge of making some really lasting transformation in our community around this. So.
Well, thank you so much. That's, for transparency and clarity, we felt like it was important for the community to know there are some really concrete, thought-out, well-planned efforts to address some of our problems in Gadsden, like homelessness and mental health. So I just, we thought it was a good time to kind of bring that to the forefront, to let people know what our mayor's office is doing, new administration along with the probate courts. And there is a concerted effort, and it is centered around kindness, but it's also centered around that we have to do what's right for the community. And so I can see that that's coming together nicely and the love, the collaboration between county government, city government, and other municipalities, and then the local nonprofits, the private organizations. That's what a community's supposed to do. We're supposed to all come to the table together and work together under the proper leadership to provide the care and the continuum of care that our citizens deserve. So thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Item 14 is citizen request, and the first one we have is Niantay Williams here to speak about the Parents Symposium 2023. It's the Year of Evidence Invitation. Ms. Williams here? Okay, I don't guess Ms. Williams made it today. Well, we'd love to have her come back and tell us about that, so we will. Ms. Nelson, I guess we can reach out to her and extend the invitation for the next time she's available. The next on our citizen request is Robert Avery, and his title is Meeting with the Mayor. Good morning.
I think it's on now. Let me give a brief history lesson, if I can, some things that happened here this morning that I'm sure you all are not aware and a lot of people in this city are not aware. We talked about the Edward Burns money that the police department is getting. That was a police officer who was gunned down in New York City back in the 80s. President Ronald Reagan recognized that and set up that fund. The police officer was ambushed and killed on the streets of New York City. The person who saw that incident was a family member from here in Gadsden and testified and put that individual in prison who killed that police officer. So we did have a little connection there with somebody from here in Gadsden who was instrumental in catching the drug dealer who shot and killed that police officer. The other thing I want to talk about is you talked about all the fancy stuff that's going on now with the reporting system. Well, guess where that system started? Right here in Gadsden. In 1986, when the first mayor council form of government was formed, we had what we called a complaint line. People would call in to this one number, and they would register their complaint. The complaint then would go to the mayor, a copy would go to that council person, and then a copy would go to the department head. And at the end of the week, the mayor and the council members would get a printout as to whatever happened to those situations, those complaints and stuff. That program was adopted by the Alabama League of Municipalities, and we were recognized by the NLC with that program. So that's where all that stuff started. We didn't have all these fancy phones and all that other stuff back then, but I just thought you'd like to know that that's where that program started from right here in the city of Gadsden.
Thank you.
Just a couple of history notes.
Sure.
I came before the council some months ago and talked about some issues that I wanted to meet with the mayor about. And of course, the mayor then said I gave too many topics. I understood that. So we thought about it, we narrowed it down, and we came back with just one topic on the 10th of this month. Made a call to the mayor's office, requested a meeting with the mayor, gave them one topic, also gave them some suggested dates, which was a two-week-out situation. We couldn't have met anytime within those two weeks. We gave the date, I mean, we called on the 10th. We gave the date of the 20th and the 21st of this month as possible meeting days. We wanted to meet with the mayor, the president of the council, and the chairman of the finance committee. And whatever today is, July 25th, I have not heard from him, and I'm still requesting a meeting from him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avery. All right. Excuse me. Section 15 is remarks by mayor and council. We'll start with District 7 this morning up on the mountain. Councilman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to say what another exciting day of local government we've had today. I'm looking forward. The app's going to be awesome for us to, are you laughing at me? I'm going to explain my situation now. I'm not, can't explain as well as you do, but I'll explain. Looking forward to that app we're all going to get to keep us informed with our citizens and our government and our department heads to make things go quicker, is filling potholes or picking up trash or reporting dogs and stuff like that. That's going to be an awesome thing. And it will be probably, what, two months, Mr. Councilman Wilson, before we get that up and going? But yes, that'll be, that'll be great when we get that. Great news about city hall. That's going to be awesome. Can't wait to get that started. And the better news about that is this building will eventually, one day, be something that's going to be awesome for the City of Gadsden, Riverfront property. I'd like to thank Eddie Nichols for everything he does with the Megyn Kelly Dream Center over there. Great work, awesome program. And Judge Hassel, thank you for everything you do. That's all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson. Councilwoman Minotra.
I too just want to echo what Chris said about Eddie Nichols and what he's doing for the City of Gadsden. And specifically, back to school is not that far away. And this Sunday, July 30th, Eddie's going to host with partnership with Floyd Elementary, a back-to-school program to get kids ready, maybe mentally and physically, for school to start. So from 3:00 to 5:00 at the Megyn Kelly Dream Center, and that is across from Floyd Elementary. That's this Sunday, 3:00 to 5:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson.
Let me start by apologizing for interrupting Councilman Robinson. He gave a great little one-liner last week about the sales are up and the winds blowing, and I was expecting him to come back with another zinger like that. That's the only reason I got, I started giggling. Anyway.
I'll work on that for next week. Maybe I can get some one-liners in.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, sounds good. Sorry.
Judge Hassel, this is awesome. Thank you. I remember, and actually, I think there were several individuals that are up here to Ms. Moffett's efforts on homelessness when we met, one of the first meetings of that homelessness coalition. It was actually on the day of the municipal runoff election five years ago. And we met and had such a great conversation about the five major things that affect homelessness and those kind of setting up that triage center-type approach to it, where you can identify the issues right as you come in contact with somebody and get them the help they need. And of course, as everybody knows, mental health is a huge, huge component of homelessness. And so for Judge Welch and all the efforts that are being made at the municipal court to divert some of those individuals from long-term criminal backgrounds to a mental health treatment approach, it's a game changer. So thank you for everything that you guys are doing and the cooperation. And to Judge Hassel's point, I too, even as an elected official, I've never seen this level of cooperation amongst the county and the municipalities in Etowah County to try to actually solve some of these big problems. So thank you for everything you are doing. Only other thing I have is just a technical finance point of order here. I always try to explain the unassigned fund balance. Obviously, I'm super excited. Everybody's excited. We announced today that we'll be acquiring the Regions Bank building. That's awesome. Just as an administrative note, we have currently about $23.5 million in our unassigned fund balance, and the layman's term for that is our savings account. You know, we have about $23.5 million in savings. The general accepted accounting practices tell you, you should have about three months' worth of savings at all times. It takes the city about $5 million a month to run the city. So that means we should have about $15 million in that unassigned fund balance, in that savings account. Even after we purchased the Regions Bank building, we'll still have right at $21 million in that fund. So we're still very fiscally sound and on good footing financially, and that's put us in a position to be able to make this big announcement today by the mayor's office. So thank you for everything that you guys have done to move the city forward. We appreciate you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Avery? Let me come back to you.
Sure.
All right. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, everybody. Once again, it's exciting to be a part of what's going on here. The eight months, seven months that we've been here, I look forward to hearing those words executive session, you know, lets us know something great is about to be announced or something good is going on. So I think y'all can feel the chemistry that we have up here. I think you can sit out there and sense that. And I think that's important in whatever you're doing. I learned in ministry, if you don't have chemistry, competence, and character, if you try to overlook either one of those Cs, you're going to pay for it. So I just want to tell this council, I appreciate each and every one of them, and want to encourage you to continue to be patient with us. A lot of good things are going on. I think Judge Hassel mentioned that. You ride anywhere in the city, and thank you for sharing on mental health, Judge Hassel. Ride anywhere around the city of Gadsden, up on the falls, on the east side, Hoek Street, people in East Gadsden been wanting that road fixed for so long. I was over there yesterday to see that road being paved and torn out, and people getting new driveways. They were very excited. Rainbow Drive, Alabama City, a lot of good things are going on. So I want to encourage you to be observant. When you ride around the city, be observant to what is going on and not listen so much to what's not going on. But a lot of great things are happening. So we appreciate the wealth of network and things that the mayor brought from all those years in Montgomery because it's manifesting right before our very eyes. So I want to thank you, Mayor Ford, you and your staff. So we appreciate all of you. I don't know if the other gentleman that was here earlier already left out, Mr. Nichols. We appreciate him and all he's doing throughout the city as well. So thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilwoman Latham.
I would like to, I need my time that I gave.
The time that you gave up last week, you want me to, okay, you have that.
Good morning to everyone. Thank you for being here today, whether in person or by way of social media. Thank you, Judge Hassel, for your efforts as it relates to mental health, as well as your positive encouragement as it relates to what our city is doing, and I'm going somewhere with that. Thank you, Eddie Nichols, for your efforts with the Dream Center. And I think it was some 20-something years ago that I met Mr. Nichols, and to just see that we have to trust the process and to see that that dream now is manifest and it's working and it's doing what it was created and destined to do. So thank him for that. Thank you, Mr. Avery, for the bit of history because he said in 1986 was when that system was, I think if I quote correctly, brought to this city or we started using it. And today, some 37 years later, we're still using that system. So we have to be excited about the fact that we have a mayor in place and council, city government in place that is, that's moving us from an antiquated system to the 21st century. We have to be excited about that progress. And I say that because I know that I'm gonna get at least one call from a constituent in Gadsden about that $2.8 million to buy Regions, purchase Regions Bank. But I will say this, if you keep doing the same things, you get the same results. If you keep doing the same thing, you're gonna get the same results. So what we have to do, if we want change and we want positive change, we have to embrace change. Change is difficult, it is sometimes hard, it is challenging, and sometimes it's just downright uncomfortable. But we have to trust the process. And so I am excited about the fact that we are moving out of an antiquated era, out of just whatever, into the 21st century. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the council and the mayor's office for your efforts to see that done. And thank you, Councilwoman Smith, for recognizing the chemistry. Everybody doesn't agree, but I'd rather see us smiling and enjoying what we're doing than to see us being combative and arguing and like we're not united. So, thank you.
Appreciate those kind words, Councilwoman, and wise words. Thank you very much. Mayor Ford, Councilman Avery had a personal phone call he had taken in regards to family matters, so if you would like to have your time.
Somebody pass the plate, please. 20 years, I thought you were 28. So how did that work out? I want to thank, it seems like this is a weekly thing, but I want to thank our EMA, our fire and police, and our trees crew, and dispatch again. Last Friday, we had a third storm within an eight-day period, and our tree crews and fire and police and EMA and dispatch, we called in all personnel that we could. They did an excellent job again. I want to thank the council for sending me pictures of areas that they were blocked in their areas because we can't get to them all. And then that way, we were able to dispatch and send people out to clean up your council districts in our area, so that worked out well. I wanted to discuss the community center issue. We have four community centers in Gadsden that we will be turning over to the school system. We'll still be in conjunction with them, but they are gonna take over operation of them and the utilities part of them. However, they'll still allow us to use those gyms for basketball usage and for neighborhood community involvement. But it works out better for them to take them over since they have after-school programs also called Edge. There also, we're going to come with a plan to let them take over the Gadsden City High School track, which was built and owned by the city. However, they control it, they operate it, it's used for their school functions, so it takes it off of us and lets them to be able to manage it and put it on their insurance policy, which will save us money in the long run, and we'll thank them for doing that. Part of the reason we're doing that is the Gadsden, I mean, the Goodwin Mills K-wood came out with a master plan. We have four times too many parks in our city than we should have. A lot of you may be thinking about a park in your mind that's in your district, that's probably not the park we're talking about. There's about 20 to 25 parks that we didn't even know existed that the city owns that maybe has a chain-link fence around it, and our Public Works has to cut the fence, cut the lots and maintain the property. So we're looking at opportunities to turn those over to neighbors, to adjoining properties, to neighborhoods, to maybe develop housing in that area, but there's a lot of parks that we're addressing at this time. The Eastern Connector public hearing is tonight at 4:00 PM at East Gadsden Community Center. Very important that we, as government officials, show up to that. This will probably be the last public hearing they have regarding the Eastern Connector, the extension of I-759 to I-278. They are in process of purchasing property as we speak, so that is being accelerated, and we're excited about that. Congressional redistricting. The legislature last week put Etowah County, moved it from District 4, Congressman Ador Hope to Congressman Rogers' district. We are excited to work with him. The good part of that was, is that before we were divided, we had 20% of our area in District 4 and 80% in District 3. I was a little upset about that, so we were able to work out a deal to get the county, what we call "made whole," all in District 3. Congressman Rogers and I served together, we're friends, he's chairman of House Military Affairs Committee, so he has a lot of leadership. We look forward to working with him. However, keep in mind, we will still be in District 4 without Congressman Ador Hope till the year 2025. And then, keep in mind that this plan has to be approved by what they call the special master. So there is a chance this may not even go through, so we don't know. If you haven't gone along the highway of 431 or 411, we're excited about what Public Works has done. I don't think Howell's left the building, but y'all, that is a big deal. They've cleared up where you can see the river. I've had a lot of comments on that. They've done that, they came to us, that was John Moore's idea that came to me, and we implemented it, and Public Works and Tina King took it and ran with it, and Ty Jackson, I guess, and Cooper, Tina, are the ones that are responsible and the employees. But these guys are out there sweating, we're doing this on our time, and man, has it made a difference. I probably have received 20 to 40 calls, I don't know, just texts, just thanking us for doing that. That's our employees, not us. The Etowah Youth Soccer League, Councilman Wilson mentioned last week, and I, and back, we had a passion for that. We worked out a deal with Etowah County Youth Soccer Association. It will now be called the Etowah Youth Soccer League, and we will be hosting that at the Gadsden State Complex. The Rush Program, which is the travel part of it, will be located at the Rainbow City Complex, which is advantageous for us. It leaves our fields open on the weekend, leaves their fields open during the week because these fields have to breathe and heal. They're state-of-the-art soccer fields and also allows to have our own tournaments on weekends also. So that was a win-win situation. Today, Tina Cody, would you please stand up? We want to thank you for your service. I believe, is this your last day or tomorrow?
Thursday.
Thursday, today's Tuesday. Who's on third? So Thursday is your last day, but we want to thank you for serving with us. She's going to work with the Etowah County School Board of Education, and her replacement is Tracy Cordell. Would you please stand? I don't know if you know Trace? No, I'm just kidding. Everybody knows Tracy. But Tracy, we want to thank you for your movement up to that office, and she's in training now, so thank you both for that. Part of our ways of trying to save money, Tracy probably should have been replaced with three full-time people, but we're replacing her with a part-time person, trying to cut costs on salaries and expenses. So it's working out good in our area of what we're trying to accomplish. The mayor will be having community meetings starting soon. We're gonna have those in the fall, so it'll be a year since we took office, and we're gonna be coming to your district, and we will definitely notify you, and we'd like for you to become a part of that also. But we made a commitment to go in every district for a year, after a year in office, to be able to meet with the public and see their concerns, and we'll have our department heads show up and we'll do whatever you wish to do in your district. So I want to thank you again, and I said this earlier, this is an iPhone. If you can see it, back in the day, and this is our City Hall, this is going to be our new City Hall. So it's not a picture of me and my wife, but it's a new iPhone. So we're excited about this. You know, if you think about the economic impact that this City Hall will have, Councilman Wilson said it in pre-council, and I wish, I hope they get that in the paper, his statements, but this is gonna pay for itself. The memorandum of understanding that we've already entered into for this city, for this complex, if it turns out to be half of what they're talking about, y'all, let me tell you, it'll change Gadsden forever. So we're excited. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Appreciate the leadership and positive information that was shared today. It's, once again, it's an exciting day here in Gadsden. Councilman Avery, glad you're back, and share with us, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple unrelated announcements, but Gadsden Job Corps Community Relations Council date and place is July the 27th, 2023, 600 Valley Street, Gadsden, Alabama. Join us to help leverage the job market, and I believe this is just a job fair? So, okay, so let me read it then. We need help with rounding up donations, partnership programs, getting involved, work-based learning, community outreach, leisure time, employment. Together, we can create meaningful change in the job market and uplift the lives of those in need. Viable employment opportunities to learn more about available volunteer positions and ways to partner with us. Please visit our website at jobcourt.org. Head Start Parent Orientation is August the 3rd at 5:30 PM at the Senior Activity Center. Also, the Parents Symposium, being that Ms. Neonta Williams wasn't here today. Year of Evidence Saturday, August the 12th, put on by the Black Alabamians for Education, 9:00 AM through 4:00 PM. CCRC, First Saturday Announcement is coming up, so just gearing everyone up for that event. The past couple ones have been put off for Carver Alumni Events and other events, so just making that announcement for CCRC, First Saturday coming up soon. Judge, thank you. Thank you for your hard work, your dedication to the community and what you do. It's very thoughtful and meaningful. Want to appreciate and applaud all those efforts of those that was ready for this past Sunday community cleanup. I've had an unforeseen emergency in my family, and so we had to, of course, postpone that. So that postponed date is August the 27th for community cleanup. We're looking at the same time, from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. There'd be teams of two. Team one will cover the Tuscaloosa Avenue area, starting at Valley Street, working down to 12th Street. Team two will cover the West Side area of District 3. Volunteers are welcome and are needed, and we'll have more to come as it relates to that day of community cleanup. Any and everyone is welcome. All you have to do is come out. We ask that you bring some hydration products for yourself, but we will have some out. We have from vests, safety vests, to pickup sticks, to gloves, to plenty of garbage bags, everything that we'll need to be successful, we have it. We just need your participation. So churches and family groups and community organizations, please come out, if you don't mind. Trip to Tacoma is, more announcements to come, just pay attention to the Facebook page. There was a lot of, lot of great information that was giving out. Thank everyone for being patient with me as I went and traveled to that conference. A lot of information, great information that was given out, and the tours was wonderful. District 3, as it relates to our district meetings, will continue next month. It's every third Tuesday, I believe it is. So just stay close and continue to view our Facebook page with those announcements as we get those out and we get back on track. And hopefully, I'll be able to be back on track with what has recently happened to where that we can make sure that we have that meeting and discuss things as it relates to our community. Please continue to be a good neighbor with the storms that have happened here recently as so many people have downed trees and things that are needing to pick up on private property. So we are looking to create a way to help those people in need, to help with the cost and things of that nature. District 3 is, I'm in conversation with creating a Better Together Commission, and this commission, first outing would be to go door-to-door in District 3 to complete the Grow Gadsden, to complete the Grow Gadsden form or survey, to say, for lack of terms at this moment. And so we need this to happen. We're looking for other volunteers. We have a group, two groups, about, average about 40 to 50 people now, so we're asking for more to come onboard so that we can make this a huge success as that be our first Final, I want to thank everyone for their prayers and concerns. My dad went into, this will be now a week that he's been in hospital. He had to have an emergency surgery for a blockage that he's had. Surgery went well, recovery is not going so well. He's now in ICU. He has his good days and he has his bad days, or good hours and his bad hours. And so I did get an update, so everything right now is kind of sustaining. He is coming back slightly with memory, and so anyone that know me and my dad, as growing up, I was probably connected to his hip pocket as I grew up as a kid. So it plays a little bit difficult for me to see my dad in the condition that he's in. So I thank you all for your prayers, your phone calls, and your continued texts. I have a group that I've started for those that wanted to know, to keep you updated on his condition, and so I'll be leaving here and going over there to check on him again and just to see and make sure that he kind of stay in with, keep him covered with good thoughts and prayers. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, council. That concludes.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. We'll certainly remember, continue to remember your dad in our prayers. Judge Hassel, thank you, and Ricky, thank you. Appreciate the work you're doing. You're the boots on the ground, you're right out there in it 24/7. It is admirable work, and thank you for what you're doing, and appreciate you taking time to be with us here today and your kind and thoughtful words. Wanted to update on the time for the Eastern Connection. I believe Mayor Ford mentioned 4 o'clock. It's actually 5:00 to 7:00 at the East Gadsden Community Center. This is the Eastern Connector project, this extension of I-759. ALDOT will be there. It's not a presentation, but just information. You'll be able to see maps, speak with ALDOT personnel should you have any questions. You know, we've been saying it for a long time, eight months, not a long time, but for eight months, and Councilman Smith certainly says it very adequately, but you're not gonna recognize Gadsden in about three years. I was saying four years, now I'm gonna say three years because time's moving on. There's been talk for years about moving City Hall. This is probably the most valuable property in all of Etowah County, and it's not an income-producing piece of property, it's city government, where the seat of the city government sits. I think it's a wise move to move our city government to another location. We're grateful to Regions Bank, and a personal note, Paul Steivner and I have been lifelong personal friends, and I didn't know this was even going on until the mayor mentioned it one day and asked me if I knew Paul Steivner, and I said, "Well, since I was about four years old." And so that really makes it a special, personal thing for myself. But this is changing Gadsden, and just even the cutting that you mentioned, I was riding in this morning, you can see the beautiful bridge and the water. That was a great idea, so thanks to Public Works and to your administration, Mayor, for doing that. So once again, another great day in Gadsden, thank you. Ms. Cody, we're gonna miss you. You've done, you've served our city well. You and your husband, Paul, have done a fine work for the city of Gadsden over the last 20-plus years, so thank you all very much as a family, but thank you individually for your steady work in our zoning department in there. You will be missed. All right, so with that, if there's not anymore. Councilman Wilson.
A point of personal privilege, I just want to say congratulations to the crime dog, Fred McGriff, for being inducted into the Baseball Hall of Fame yesterday.
That's right. Go Freddie.
Yeah, man.
All right, will be dismissed. Thank you.